Motion by Pat, seconded by John. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, you've got eighty-one P. Mr. Bob.
Oh, yeah. So I'm here to represent Michael Seaver. He owns these parcels that you see that are on Solomon-Gillen. And actually, this lot here with the existing house actually has an address on Prairie Street, as opposed to Patsy Lane because it's a private road. There's also this formerly Belincetta Street here, which is owned, he owns both sides. So he clearly owns that as well. So the proposal is to take this parcel here and subdivide it into four applying lots, A, B, C, and D. They're all in compliance. They have a proper area, proper shape factor, proper signage.
Bob, just for clarity purposes, the one that's existing on Patsy?
Yep.
Even though it appears that it's built on perhaps the public way, that's still in compliance? Or does it end?
Well, yeah, basically as a private way, he owns to the centerline of it, so.
Okay. That's what I just said for clarity. Motion.
Make a motion.
The move by Pat, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We're gonna be nice to you.
I'll be.
It's just a signature.
Yeah, it's just a signature. So I just want, my name's Peter Lavoy. I'm here representing Test Site Services. I was here February, and you guys signed an A and R plan. So we sent it to Land Court. It's a Land Court piece. They had us make...
Somebody did you say?
Test Site Services?
Test.
Test.
Test Site Services. Yes, so Land Court made us, you know, rotate the plan, so the bearings changed. So that's the only reason why they want, they want you to re-sign the My Law.
Lines are in the same place.
Lines are in the same place, it's just the bearings changed on the plan.
They put it the right way instead of the wrong way?
Yeah.
Motion by Joe to sign. Motion by John. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Need everybody's signatures?
Yeah, it's Land Court.
That's why I had to come.
Those eighty-one P prints? Eighty-one P prints that you distributed?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And all the sign-on, you don't have to make prints. Over there, too, by the way.
Nice. Your penmanship's getting better. His penmanship's getting better.
We quote it that way.
Mine doesn't work. It doesn't work.
Larry, can I have that pen back, please? Oops. This one's fine.
It works. You got one that works. Keep it here just a bit.
Okay.
It works on paper.
This one works.
Okay, we've got a public hearing at seven oh two.
Application of Richard E. Terrell and Madeline A. Fafford, trustees of Lyman Trust Realty Trust, 120 Corry Drive, Milford, to rescind the definitive subdivision entitled Platinum Park, located on a twelve point fifty-six acre parcel off East Main Street, north of I-495, Milford, Mass. The assesses map thirty-one, lots seventeen and seventeen B, and Platinum Way, BP zoning District. Let me read them up.
Okay, Bob, you're on.
So this is the, this was the Platinum Way development. There's a two-lot subdivision with a small cul-de-sac. In conjunction with the site plan for Platinum Way with the transportation terminal, we need to eliminate this cul-de-sac and the two lots. Therefore, we are requesting that we rescind that particular plan showing the roadway and the public way and the two lots.
Got a letter from Larry recommending approval, and also one from Mike recommending approval of the decision.
We have to rescind that, right, Mike?
Yep.
That's what they voted, yep.
Any members?
What are you talking about, just rescinding? You're talking just rescinding?
Yeah.
No, I don't have any issues with that.
Being a public hearing, anybody in the audience have anything to say? Yes, sir? Just state your name and your address, please.
My name's Scott Brickley, 433 East Main Street. We didn't even really get this until the start of the paper. And we noticed it's gonna be like over fifty cars every half hour. They're gonna be...
That's a different case.
Okay, this is gonna be, this is just a rescinding of the existing subdivision now. We're gonna discuss, the discussion's gonna come later on the site plan.
Right. Okay, so this, this meeting, from what we understood, is gonna be whether it's gonna go forward or whether it's gonna...
But this portion of it is strictly on the rescinding of the subdivision. So if we could hold off, and then we're gonna have discussion on the site plan after. This is first, this is the first, yes.
What, after this?
This is the first step.
Mr. Chairman, Vinny Zanella through Eugene Circle. If we don't, if you guys don't rescind this tonight, the parking lot can't go forward, correct? Does the one that ends at the eighteen?
No, not really, but...
What was your first name again? I didn't...
Vincent Zanella, Eugene Circle. So if you vote not to rescind this, we can't, the parking lot can't be forced down, correct?
No.
The parking lot will not be in?
If the zoning change doesn't go through.
If it stays so, they can only, if it stays so that two commercial buildings are built there?
No.
No.
What?
Then what expires in two days? We can't enter the paper.
I understand that. It's, there's discussion whether we need to rescind this or we don't, or we don't have to rescind it, so we're just gonna go through the procedure rather than the court cases.
My question is, if you vote no, not rescind this, it still stays as separate lots?
And it can't be?
No.
Used for the terminal?
No. They would just have to modify the site plan.
To be on two lots, that's all. The zoning just stays, it allows that use.
Yeah, the zoning's frozen.
The IB zone allows that use.
They could have done this rescission five years ago, and it wouldn't change the fact that the zoning's been frozen.
Okay, anybody else got a question? It's a pleasure to the board.
Make a motion. We rescind the site plan, or the subdivision plan.
Close the hearing, too?
Close the public hearing, yes.
I'll second that.
Move by Joe to close the public hearing and rescind the site plan, seconded by Lena.
The subdivision.
Subdivision, excuse me. Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Babe, could you sign the notice?
Yep.
So did you have, you had half-size for these guys?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you.
What was that you were saying about rodeos? You ready?
Larry, you wanna start off with your, or you wanna tell Bob?
No, I can, I can read my report. Hold on a second. This is a continued site plan review for Paulini Lom LLC. It was filed under Platinum Way, map thirty-one, lots seventeen and seventeen B. It's in the BP zone. The applicant has submitted revised plans for the proposed transportation terminal on the subject properties. The updated plan improves a landscaping and grading buffer area being proposed along the southerly end of the property. In addition, the applicant's traffic engineer has submitted a revised traffic report, and I've attached that in your packet. The TEC report dated August seventh, 2019. The memo had been dated, the town engineer and myself. That contains specific improvements being proposed for several key intersections that will be impacted by traffic from the proposed transportation terminal development. Based on that, I recommend approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the applicant shall have received planning board approval to rescind the Platinum Park affinity plan, which they just did. Number two, that the applicant shall install all the improvements as noted in the memorandum from TEC that I had just mentioned. And three, that the applicant provide traffic control at the driveway on East Main Street by use of Milford police officers as traffic details for the AM and PM peak hour traffic cycles. No building permits or occupancy permits should be issued until a suitable bond for all of the above noted improvements has been provided to the planning board. You have Mike's updated memos included. The most recent one was the August twelfth. So Mike can address those if you like.
Sure. So, yeah, just a quick recap. My original memo was dated July tenth when the submittal came in. There were some comments in there that most of the straightforward comments not associated with the traffic have been addressed in the revised plans. And then one of the comments was that there was no traffic impact assessment or statement submitted originally. When I returned from vacation, there was, the traffic impact assessment was submitted. The date is July fifteenth. So then I wrote a memo in reference to that traffic impact assessment dated July fifteenth. Since then, there has been a memorandum prepared by TEC, who did the original impact statement or assessment, that's dated August seventh. So that's what has brought us to this August twelfth memo. I'll just go through it quickly. There's no specific site plans for all the intersections that are referenced in all the paperwork in the submittal, in which the memorandums and the assessment from TEC reference or state that the applicant is committed to evaluating these intersections as need be. So I'm just bringing that forward. Quite often, you have a site plan, you know, you have intersection site plans, and it tells you exactly what they're doing. But there's none there. They mentioned they were gonna bring some aerial maps for presentation purposes tonight. And then a couple of the other intersections, Route sixteen, Beaver Street, and Fortune Boulevard, that set alights themselves are under the jurisdiction of Mastart. So anything that, that has to be vetted and approved by them. So I would, if the planning board ends up approving this plan, I would just tie that in as a condition. And then, but in addition to that, keep us in the loop through that approval process through Mastart. And that essentially holds true, condition that they vet any changes to Route one oh nine, Medway Road, which we just made a little head, we're making some headway on, on the Vance Green. Now this intersection's gonna have a little more traffic. So any changes in that intersection, once again, if it was vetted now through this approval, it would then have to go to Mastart because they're interested in all the traffic coming from the four ninety-five direction. So any changes at that intersection, although it's not totally under their jurisdiction, it still has to be vetted through Mastart. So essentially, it is under their, it's not under their jurisdiction, but the changes have to be approved by Mastart. So once again, that's just another condition, if there's an approval. And the last statement, once again, it's another condition. I know I'm referencing these conditions, but if there is an approval, I would tie, you know, the memorandum, once again, says that the applicant is committed and willing to evaluate the intersection associated with the route from the delivery vans up to Industrial Road, where the warehouse is located. So I would tie, I would put, I would recommend placing a condition that at any time if the town needs to hire a consultant pre or post-construction, that they would pay for that.
Do you do estimates for a long...
Well, I wasn't involved with the original submission of this plan, but I did do some of the modifications, the recent modifications, according to the letters. Basically, I only, two things that Mike requested that I did to the plan was I put the hundred-year flood elevations and storage volumes at both stormwater structures, and I put a table, use table on the plan so they could see how the zoning lies. Like Larry said, one of the things that we've done since the last meeting is that we've created this earthen berm here along the south side with a lot more screening. These are, these trees are what they call green giant arborvitae, and they're very hardy, they grow quickly. They're not, they're, they're less subject to wind damage and blight and disease and One of the other things is that the, the other issue that I came aware of this afternoon was the fact that we did do some, we did six, we did twelve borings along the ledge face here to determine, about every sixty-foot intervals. And what the blasting company determined was that there are, similar to what we found across the street when we did the concrete batching plant, that there are areas that there's the ledge will, we should be able to, let me just say, across the street, we had a forty-five foot cut. This is between twelve and fifteen, max. So in quite a few areas, the ledge was there and should be able to be just drilled and, you know, and split off. But then there were some areas where there was, they found just dirt. So just like across the street, it looks like it's gonna have to be a ledge face intermingled with a boulder wall. And we understand that once that, once that combination occurs, that we will have to, you know, after it's done, we will get a structural engineer to certify its construction and that it's done properly. Other than that, I don't really have anything as far as the site plan is concerned.
You may want to point out the parking...
The little storage hut.
Well, yeah, but aside from that, the parking has been eliminated along the southeast.
Yeah, along here.
So that's all been widened out as far as a buffer goes.
Right.
And the plantings have been extended all the way up.
Yes.
To where it makes the bend to go north.
And the, the small shed, the hundred ninety-five foot square foot shed has been located right in this area here. Also with me tonight is Liz Oakman from TEC. And she will, she'd be willing, she's here to answer any questions on the traffic report and traffic concerns that anybody might have.
Mike, you've gone over the traffic reports, so...
Yeah, and there also, one of my comments was in reference to the end of Birch Street and Beaver Street, closer to the industrial warehouse, right around the corner from Industrial Road. And there were some plans already on record from another development to widen that intersection to free up the cars that are taking a left onto Beaver Street. And they're, they're committed to widening that road by, you know, an additional lane, like eleven feet. So that'll...
Is that on the right-hand side going in?
It's at the end of Birch.
No, it's exiting.
Birch Street and Beaver Street intersection.
All these houses?
Oh, okay, down there, yeah.
Yeah, so when you're...
I just wanted to get that side, I wanted to get that side moved.
Yeah.
Oh, it's getting moved.
No, not at that intersection.
Okay.
I don't know who put that there, but it's awful.
Okay, there's no taking...
When you come out of Industrial Way, you take a right to head out to four ninety-five to hit Beaver Street the one way. That gets queued up because cars cannot take a left due to the traffic on Beaver Street in the peak hours. So by widening that, you get at least the cars on the right.
Taking a right.
Take a right, and the queue gets, yes.
Is it, there's no land taking there? It's all...
No, no, it was already all vetted from another site, from another development. So they're, they're committed to doing that as well.
It's designed to help people going on waters. Something they need to pick up, right out, and then go to Maple Street.
Any questions from the board?
The only thing I had, I'd gone through, went through the traffic report. The only thing that I'm worried about, you know, Larry dealt with it to a certain extent. We'd had a discussion with it, and the police officer thing was part of that. The other thing that, that I'm, I shouldn't say I'm worried about, but we don't have a mechanism to control it, was commitment by the applicant that it's a staggered usage. And going through, at least to give some level of comfort, once this gets, once this gets opened, it would be my recommendation that for at least the first month, we put in traffic counters to see if we're actually getting sixty cars in and out, or if Amazon is, you know, they have a way of staging that, obviously, but it's up to them to do that. The fact that we don't, it's a type of site that if you go to ITE, it's not listed in there in terms of trip generation or anything like that. So all of this is, is based on a, an understanding from the, from the applicant as to how it's gonna function or not, and we have no control over that. So to make sure that we at least, because if that, if that changes, the analysis that was done isn't worth the paper that it's printed on. It's gonna, it's gonna have to be redone.
So this is the...
So I want to make sure that, that in fact, we're getting something close to what, what was analyzed for. So to me, the easiest way to do that is to put, is to put traffic counters at the entrance for the first month.
Hourly counters?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In, in the driveway?
In the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because, because the...
In and out?
In and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would also give us the, the, you know, as to the design, there was a staging requirement. You know, we only have this many extra spaces because we're only getting this many people. If we have the in and out, we'll be able to know whether that staging is in fact working or not, too. So, I mean, that was the only, the only other thing. I mean, we've gone through traffic analysis on this section. I didn't need them for a number of developments, and, yeah, we know there's a lot of traffic down there, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, it, it still works out that, you know, neither any of these developments are, are the root cause of the, the issues that are down there. So that was my only, only other thing that I saw.
Any other members of the board?
I do have a question on Larry's recommendation number three. How long is this to last?
What, that they would have a detail?
Yeah. Is it a month? Is it a year? Is it indefinitely? How long is it to last?
I would make a suggestion.
No, I'm just asking what it means. I don't...
Well, I was just suggesting that it needs to be done, and it's up to the board to determine the longevity of the practice. What's that?
I suppose, but I mean, to quote our former police chief, and I'm not gonna quote him exactly, but I'll paraphrase. You wanna mess up traffic, put a cop in the middle. I understand the need for it, but I remember years ago, before there was a signal on the top of Dill Street, what it used to be like with the traffic cop there. I, I just, it's a very well-traveled road, specifically once school gets back in. I, I just don't know if putting a detailed policeman for, I don't know exactly how, it's kinda open-ended at best. I understand peak hours, which could be interpreted based on their load, and I just don't know the duration that you're, that you're thinking of.
Well, I mean, to be honest, I think the issue is, and this, this was looking at the analysis, and what, what gave me agita, lack of a better word, is, is the, the analysis in the lot itself shows a level of service of F. And, and knowing the Amazon drivers and knowing what they, what they do at the current location, and this was discussion with Larry, I was significantly worried that the Amazon drivers aren't gonna wanna sit and wait in a level of service F at an intersection. So that led to that. To be honest, putting a police officer in and not having him out in the road may work just as well, because I don't think the Amazon drivers are gonna go and reach out. I'm not sure that it needs to be a police officer. It could be somebody there to monitor that. I'm not sure that it's needed or not. But I think what I was, what I wanted to make sure was the applicant was aware that, based on the way Amazon drivers have functioned in the past, there's significant concern from this board that, that they would have to either, either it works, as they say now, and the Amazon drivers wait till there's, till there's an opening and we have no problem, or if we don't see that, that they were gonna have to make some provision, be that a police officer, be that an Amazon personnel releases them, be it a, be it a traffic signal, which makes no sense whatsoever, but that, that's an option, to rectify the situation. Because it, it should work as designed. I just don't know that the Amazon drivers will allow it to work as designed.
So can that condition be something that's a future consideration if, that it needs to be, if it needs to be revisited based on the combination of how the Amazon drivers behave and the counts that we do after a couple of months? And if it, if those, if the, if that warrants a detailed cop, and you would, you know, and we would look into it at that point, as opposed to having it be a upfront automatic?
I don't know.
Me personally, I don't have an issue with doing it that way. I, I, again, I don't know that we know how it's gonna work, so...
When it was designed, how many, each shift, how many vehicles, how many vans be going out?
Say, from Amazon, you got fifty every half an hour. Fifty personal vehicles coming in and fifty personal, or vans going out. And then the reverse in the evening, every half hour. Fifty in and fifty out.
Until they go through the four hundred and twenty, or so.
Till they go through the four hundred and vans.
Yeah, definitely should be.
It's gonna take more than an hour.
I think, I think we should have it there when they start, too. Just, again, not...
To me, one of the fundamental problems I'm having is not just them exiting the site, it's them now clogging the roads, if you will, coming down Beaver and taking a right on the Medway.
Right.
Okay, so now we have them coming out of Fortune and coming around Medway that way. And to me, that intersection is busy enough with commuters, if you will. Now we throw in a, a private entity into the MAX. Now we throw in a, a private entity into the max, into the mix, rather. We have four hundred and eighty vans on this side, you have, I don't know, six hundred from the other side. To me, the site initially that we, that was approved, it was never designed for a thousand vehicles like this.
No, but this.
But, I know, but we can sit there and we can say it's allowable use and it's a parking lot and this and that thing, but the problem is, they're still merging at the same site.
But this is gonna, this is gonna take care of.
I wish you were right.
Well, I hope.
I'm sorry, I wish, babe.
Again.
I love you, and I wish you were right.
The stop and shop in TJ Maxx, buildings aren't gonna be empty forever.
But they're still storing vehicles in, and, and to me, the last time I asked, which was last meeting, they had no plans of decreasing the amount of vans there. I'm just saying.
Well, again, once they, once they open those buildings up, hopefully, he gets.
There's a lot of ifs and buts and candy and nuts.
Oh, I understand.
I'm just, I, I struggle with, and I'm just being upfront.
I am.
Again, I've never been a fan, so I, I, I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that I am, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, I, I'm just explaining my concerns. Obviously, we all know how I'm gonna vote.
Yeah.
I'm just explaining my concerns, that's it. And I don't think I'm far-fetched.
No.
And now throw into the mix now, as of the last couple of days, they've had a bunch of delivery trucks that are parked all up and down Industrial, and it, it's just become even much more of a congestion-ridden.
Twelve delivery trucks?
No, eighteen-wheelers.
Oh, I see.
They're all up and down the road. And, and forgive me, I don't know if, they just don't, even within their own place, they're double-stacked, there, there's, if a fire truck had to go through to their own building, they may be, they may have trouble getting through.
It's a zoo down there.
You don't, sir, you don't, I see it every day, believe me, you don't have to tell me what I already know, I, I'm right next to them.
You almost need to crack the top down, Corey Park. That's on that.
Anyhow.
Anybody else? Okay, the public, anybody?
Ladies and all, it's for Eugene Circle. Again, I was here at the last meeting, the gentleman who represented this site actually did come to our house.
I was gonna ask that question.
And he did say, he did do, say three things that were very concerning. He did offer a couple hundred dollars in trees to be put on my property, because he said he saw no way that this site was gonna be designed, that they could contain the noise and the lighting from polluting my property. He also said, "I am on the same vein that they will be blasting on."
Wow.
All right? He also said that the way that it was gonna be set up and they, a change here, that it was gonna be more deciduous trees than evergreens. Well, that has been changed, that meant from October, if, if they still do it that way, from October to April, there'll be no screening on that side.
There are only eight deciduous trees proposed on this site. Seventy-three varieties.
That was a change from the last meeting. But the other two things, he said, there is no possible way that, he came to my house, he had lunch, he walked the property, he offered us a little bit of, like I said, a couple hundred dollars worth of evergreens to put on my side of my property, on my fence, to try and help out.
But he came upstairs and he looked down and he said, "Yep."
The light will be in this bedroom all the time. So when we drove here tonight, you're talking about tractor-trailers, from Three Eugene Circle to here, it was almost twenty-seven minutes, because two tractor-trailer trucks had the intersection where you refused to put the cumbeys in.
Because of traffic.
Screwed up, because of traffic, and we couldn't, nobody could move, so like twelve minutes to get through the intersection, and they both said, "Amazon," from Oregon, on the sides of the truck. So adding two thousand more cars, roughly, because you're gonna have people that have to get to work, or sixteen hundred, because you have to have four hundred people come to work, four hundred people go down that road, four hundred people go back out to make deliveries, then four hundred people go back to their cars, and then those four hundred cars leave, you're talking two thousand trips on the same roads, it just took me twenty-seven minutes to get here from Three Eugene Circle.
Hence, what a sudden.
At seven, six-thirty on Tuesday night. During normal times, it's gonna make it worse. There's a piece of property on Birch Street that's for sale. Put this on Birch Street, they'll just have to drive across the street, right across, right behind, right behind this electrical place.
But that's not Faford.
But it seems you guys, it seems this is getting pushed through, and it's not the right place, because it's gonna affect three of the four worst intersections in the town. You haven't thought about school buses going through that intersection at the same time?
Ambulances?
Ambulances, the fire stations right there on Birch Street coming through that way? This is not the place for this property. Office buildings, be told, yeah, that's fine. And the whole thing that it's gonna be twen, it's gonna be seven in the morning to nine at night, every night?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week? Let's have that traffic cop come there at nine at night and make sure nobody's there at nine oh one, because I live right there, and if they're out there making noise, happen like they do in Corey Park, if you go there.
I've been there, I've been going there.
They stay there and have cookouts, they have, they have a few drinks, they hang out, they get loud, they have a radio playing, they have a pack of the car open.
And there's never a cop riding through there.
So, how we call them, the cops nightly? It's the way it's gonna have to be, if this is the way it gets approved. This backs up to residential neighborhood, it's not the site for this. Between the traffic and where it backs up to, this is not the site for this.
It's gonna take a school bus.
And I haven't heard anything about what they're offering to me, whether they're gonna say yes or no, because the guy who was here last time isn't here this time.
But he did come up to visit with you.
He did.
And he saw everything that.
And he said.
He discussed it with him.
He said it will, it will negatively impact my property for the rest of the time that it's there. He says there's no way they can keep the sound or the light from my property, because the way my property is elevated.
And the blasting.
To me, I told him, mitigation for me would be by my house and a fair market value now.
Right.
That's the only way that I'm gonna get any money out of my house.
Right.
Seven days a week, fourteen hours a day.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment, Scott Brookley again, I just wanted to comment, I think we could probably, since this is still in transition right now, we don't know what we're gonna do here, I think a good way to start this is not to go with, okay, we're gonna allow four hundred and eighty-one vehicles to go in there and go ahead and become new drivers and stuff like that. I think we should start this off at maybe like a hundred at a time, see how each works, because at least that way.
Doesn't work that way.
It doesn't work that way.
Seems like it should in this case, because, I mean, you're really, a lot of traffic taking place there. If they're all at once, not just like, it's just, it's a bad place for it.
It would be a good way to do it, but again, to, to do the, the amount of work, to make it worthwhile, the amount of work. They couldn't do it that way.
What you were saying about the fact that you just put in traffic trucks, to go ahead and see how much traffic is coming in and out.
I understand that.
But shouldn't that be done?
But the amount of construction work that would have to be done would not be worth a hundred vehicles for anybody. Just, that's why they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to do it that way, which I can, I can understand that.
Just, I, I agree with Vinnie, it's like, it's just not, I think this really needs to be examined, it's just not a good idea in that area.
And I don't understand how it's, with this volume of cars proposed on the streets, that it's even to this point where that Cumberland Farms was shot down immediately due to traffic concerns. That's laughable to me.
The Cumberland Farms wasn't shot down because of that, the Cumberland Farms came, well, then, don't believe everything you read.
I've learned that. I've learned that far.
Cumberland Farms asked for an opinion, and the board gave them an opinion, it's totally different situation than this.
How, how the rest of your neighborhood feel about this? I see there's four or five people here.
We didn't even get anything like.
I'm sorry?
We didn't even get anything in the mail, we saw this.
Okay, all right.
Most of the people don't know.
They don't know.
Quote-unquote, "One of my neighbors going today is not gonna solve anything, because it's already been established that it's, they threw their hands up."
I don't think, in, I mean, I haven't done the research, but I am gonna look into it, I don't know if Faford's ever been subject to in this town. I don't know if anything he's ever done has, has been shot down.
Yep.
And I think people are just frustrated.
Well, my name is Priscilla Brookley, I'm.
What's your first name?
Priscilla.
I make a left out of my house to go towards Milford, and I'm making a left to get on to Birch Street. Now I'm gonna have to go by that area, which is already busy in the morning, just to make that left. And it's like, people are always jumping that light and everything, because I'm very concerned with the traffic right there. It's very hard, and I have to back into my driveway, just so I can pull out to make that left. And watching traffic coming over this way, it's just, it's very congested down there. I'm worried about the noise, the, the dust from construction, very heavy from across the street. No, and then more blasting and stuff. Mostly traffic has just gotten much worse in that area, we've been there for over twenty years.
Thank you.
Pleasure to the board.
Steve Vanderbeek.
Oh, excuse me.
Your last name?
Fifty, fifty-two.
Do you wanna stand up and come up here?
Sir, I didn't get your last name, sir.
Vanderbeek.
Steve Vanderbeek.
Fifty-two Depot Street.
Thank you.
I found out about it tonight while I was eating dinner, and I read the newspaper. That's how I found out, and I ran down here. I certainly haven't done my due diligence when it comes to this, but I can tell you that coming and going from town, traffic is tough enough. You know, you made a comment, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name, but you made a comment about the, I'd like to paraphrase here, but all the, all the different sites, the work that's been done, has not been the root cause for the traffic. Well, I don't think any of those sites is anywhere near the size and the amount of vehicles that we're talking about with this. So it's bad enough as it is, if you try to leave town, even if the traffic lights are working properly, the gas stations alone down there on one oh nine, at that, you know, at the end, the mobile station, they'll, they'll slip out, and now all of a sudden, all the traffic is stopped, and no one is even going through the traffic lights, because they're trying to get gas to go off and do their runs. So traffic is bad enough as it is, the way I see it. And again, I apologize for not doing my due diligence here, I definitely want to get more involved in what's going on and find out how, you know, what's happening, but it just doesn't seem like it's the, it's the right thing. And, and I'm curious, what's in it for our town? What is it, what's in it for us? And again, I don't know, because I haven't done my due diligence, so can someone explain what, what's in it for us?
Just a site that's, just be a site that's being developed, that's, that's all.
What's in it for us?
It's like any other site.
So is it necessary?
We're not, we're not a board of necessary or not, it's, we're not the applicant, the applicant has the right to come before us.
Right.
He has to meet, as long as the applicant meets the criteria of the zoning bylaws, we, we have to pass it.
And I don't, I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't realize there's a lot of traffic down there, but we, as a board, as town engineer, as town planner, as, as multiple consultants that we've had have evaluated traffic down there, the analysis comes back, and it's very difficult to say, okay, now we're gonna stop, we're not gonna let anybody else develop because of that. You just, legally, you have no leg to stand on to be able to do that. We, we, we've got traffic analysis that shows three hundred units that are gonna, that, that were applied for to go in as affordable housing down the street, the traffic analysis worked. All the traffic analysis comes back and says it works. So as a board, it's difficult to make a decision that says, we don't think it will, but, but we can't prove that, so we can't, we, we can't, we're not gonna allow this to happen, that, that becomes, that becomes a court case that you lose. So that's, that's the issue that you have. I don't, you know, I, I think this board is, is keenly aware of the fact that there is significant traffic down there, but when people run analysis and people go and look to try to improve it, as part of the process they do it, that's what the analysis comes back at. And, and we've had multiple people look at that, not just, not just the town people, but, but we've hired consultants as part of that process, and they've all come back saying the analysis that the, the applicants, various applicants along that way have done is, is correct.
So when does this get approved? I mean, do we, is this gonna be approved tonight, or?
It's, it's, it's a site plan approval, there, and the other thing, in terms of notification, as part of a site plan, there is no, there's no notification requirement other than it's posted. It's not like application for subdivision where they have to send, they have to send out, the state requires a butters to be notified. There's no, there's no mailing notification that they were required, so the, they followed what needed to be done by state law, just so, just so you're aware of it, just because I don't want people to think, oh, we should have been notified, or there's a requirement that that happens, that, that's not the case.
It's Joe, right?
Yes.
I'm Joe, so what does the town get out of this? Does the town get anything like?
They get tax dollars, just like they do on every other site, just like they did when, when you, when, when your house was built.
Right.
They got, they got a higher tax dollar value than they're gonna get now.
So that's taxes based on a parking lot?
That'll be taxes based, yeah, it'll be assessed as a, as a parking lot. I have no idea what the assessors will value that at or not.
Commercial, commercial, commercial parking lot.
Terminal.
Terminal.
Right now, it's, it probably assessed as vacant land.
It's a higher, it's a higher assessment, yes.
But with, I mean, the town gets that, but what about if, if the light structures have to be changed? I mean, you made it.
They're gonna, they're gonna do it.
Okay, so they, they do have to pick that up, okay.
Because any, any of the traffic signal improvements that they've indicated is, is part of this, it's not the town's, it would be done as part of this development.
Yeah, 'cause I can see, I can easily, like, at least two intersections that could have to be redone.
They're, they're doing work on, I don't remember exactly how many there were, that they're doing some, some level of work on. Some of it is timing work, some of it's some, some widening stuff, so there's a variance of stuff that they're doing to get from that location to, to Beaver Street, up to Industrial Road, to get the vehicles there. That's, that's on them, as part of the agreement, they would do that.
Okay.
And that's in, those are outlined in, in the report that they, that they gave us, that, that goes through the traffic analysis and says, these improvements need to be made in order to either improve the traffic or keep it at a level that's similar to what it is today. So again, I'm not gonna try to say it's, their stuff is gonna make it such that it's better down there, it may only get it to the point where it's similar to what it is today. I think we all know that, that to get it to a level that's, that's much improved would need significant changes to, to everything that, that's down there, and, and would probably revolve considerably around one oh nine Beaver Street intersection and the state's improvements of that intersection.
That's why I had suggested you estimate a bond amount that they could post tomorrow that addresses all of those issues.
If, if it was up, I know it was up to me, knowing what I know about Amazon, I wouldn't have approved the site that they use on Industrial Drive, but we had to, again, they follow the site plan, they follow the zoning bylaws, we had to approve it. And if they were to do another site like that tomorrow, and they follow the zoning bylaws, as much as we wouldn't like it, we still have to, we'd still have to approve it, so it's, it's not that we just wanna stick it through, it's, we're, we're bound, we're bound, they're bound by the, the laws, the zoning bylaws, and we're bound by the zoning bylaws.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
You say it's zoning bylaws, can you make a bylaw that restricts them on the weekends to certain hours?
Not now.
Who can?
We can, but it doesn't, it's grandfathered.
Won't apply to them. If you change it today, it wouldn't apply to them.
It'd be grandfathered?
Yes. Anything that's pre-existing, you can't change.
No. So, Mr. Chairman, is there gonna be a, a report on the traffic study? I see that she's here. I see that she's here.
No.
Is she going to...
Well, Mike, Mike had gone over it.
Yeah.
I didn't see any, I really don't see any need in it.
Because she's sitting here.
I understand that.
If she was sitting here, that she would...
If we needed, if we needed, but again, with Mike going through it and agreeing with the thing, I just see, it's not that you're going to get the...
No. All right.
We were kind of interested in the area. Where would we find that information?
We have people in the audience, that's why.
Just going to go with the same thing we went last time. Pleasure to the board. Oh, yeah. You, you make a, yeah, you made a motion too.
Make a motion we approve based on, well, based on Mike's, Mike's letter with...
Yep.
...stipulations, as well as Larry's letter with stipulations, and then also adding the stipulation that at least for the first month that we, prior to, prior to getting final occupancy, and that the applicant provide us with traffic counts in and out of the site for at least a month. So, effectively, they can get temporary occupancy, reuse the site for a month, come back in and get final occupancy after a month, once they come to us and look at, and we can look at the data and make sure that in fact, it's functioning as it said.
We also have the ability to come back and, and eliminate the condition for the police officer?
No. I don't, I, I don't have, I, I'm, I'm too honest to whether, whether, whether I would want to be a police officer out there and trying to think where he's going to stand and try to direct traffic, to be totally honest. So, to me, I, I, as long as the applicant is aware that, that there is an issue and that, that we will evaluate that as part of it, I'm not sure that, that it makes sense to stick a police officer out there as, as an ongoing...
It absolutely doesn't, Joe, however, you should leave the, you should have the exercise be left in there, knowing that if they create adverse conditions down here, that there is a viable option at their expense.
Yeah, because we're going to need that option.
So, I, I, I don't think eliminating it is the right way to go. I think it should be left on the table. And to be perfectly honest, I appreciate that you're putting in the trip counts for a month, that's great. And three months later, when it changes, we're not going to know, so I, I'm sorry, I definitely think that that should be left in.
You could do the detail based on...
That's what I think.
You could do the detail based on, as determined by either the town engineer or the chief of police, that's how you've done it in other situations.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, it can change all the time, I don't think this board, I, you know, I, I mean, we can always ask them to, to, to verify it. I want to make sure that, at least in the beginning, that it, that it's functioning the same way. I mean, I don't know that we're going to go through this every month to see if they're still functioning the same way.
Right.
So, I, you know, I, I don't know why we, we need counts continuously.
Well, the problem comes, I mean, in the last three or four months, they've been before us with all kinds of complaints, you know, down to the old Stop and Shop area. People have been complaining constantly that we had to have them come here and discuss the whole thing. So, I agree that, you know, a month is okay, but ongoing, you know, is, is probably a little bit better than just one month and just forget about it, so that's my take.
My question becomes, what are you going to do with the data?
Yeah.
And who's reviewing the data?
Right.
I mean, if there's an issue five months downstream, you can ask them to reproduce the data.
Do it again, right.
But the, the problem that I have is the fact that the initial stuff is, is based on, on something that may, could totally be incorrect. So, that, that presents more of a problem to me. We can always come back and ask them for the stuff later on, but I'm, I'm not sure what we're going to do with the data, you know, if, if we have it.
All right.
Okay, also, on that wall, where they determine, once the excavation's completed and the blasting, so determine where, where the wall is going to be built.
The, yeah, they, they...
Because there's no way to know them right now.
Yeah, they, they need to come back as soon as they, as soon as they do that.
Put a note on the plans for that.
I mean, the requirement is that, is that they submit a...
The wall will determine...
Yeah, that they submit a structural prior, but at this point, because it's a ledge cut...
Right.
It's somewhat difficult to do, but as soon as they do that, as part of the work, they need to come back to us with the, the design of the wall. They don't want it as an as-built, let's put it that way. As-built doesn't do me any good.
Not at all.
But they would need to do that anyway, so...
Yeah.
That's correct. They would need to do that anyways, I just, I just want to make sure that, that they realize that and that, and that I, I don't want the surprise later on that they come back and say, oh, we couldn't do it this way and we have the parking lot is rearranged, the parking changes. I want to know that as that wall's going in as opposed to later in the game. So, yeah, you can add that to my motion, babe.
Okay.
That's a big motion.
It's a lot of motion.
This is a big motion.
Have a second?
Well, effectively, it was Larry's letter...
Yeah.
Mike's letter, the addition of, of, of counts in and out for, for one month prior to occupancy, and that once the applicant designs, is able to design the, the wall, that they come back to us with the, with, with whatever that looks like at that point in time, the design of the wall, and if there's any changes to the layout, we know about it at that time, not later. And we change Larry's, Larry's one-note three to, at the discretion of the, the police chief...
Town engineer.
Town engineer, as, in terms of the, the need for the police officer.
And that's to do the improvements TEC report enumerated?
Yes, which is, which I believe is in Mike's letter, so that, yeah, that's why.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't mention that only because they were in the letter.
Already, yep.
That's a long one, babe.
Got that committed to memory, Bob?
Yeah.
Karen, you have all that?
You're watching reruns.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Lena. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor?
No.
Aye.
Opposed?
You know it.
Four in favor, one opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, how do they feel, shall I, shall I, shall I...
They're crossing. They, they have one good-sized wall.
He's on vacation, so I don't know.
One wall, yeah.
Yeah, that one's completed, they'd have to touch up some grading, but, but they haven't done another one yet.
No, I haven't.
Have a good night, my friend.
They're doing a pretty nice job on that wall.
And all came out nice.
Yeah. Still give it like that, I'm pleased.
So...
I don't disagree, but...
So, um...
Uh, they're working all around.
Larry wants to know about the bond.
It took them a while to complete it.
Yes, it's just because of, I mean, your letter was part of...
I know, if you're driven through there, I'm sorry, but they have one, they have one large one, yeah, the one large.
Dollar amount.
They had done a significant one. That's on one side of the road, there's another significant one on the other side. Again, they just finished up though, probably.
For the bond? You want to figure out the bond for, for the completion?
Offsite 250.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bonds...
Offsite work, all the offsite work.
There's going to be a lot of traffic improvements.
Well, right, that was a conditional approval, so I should see the number before I sign the plan.
I don't disagree.
They could do that, they could submit something tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't have a problem coming up with a number, no, no, not a problem at all.
Yeah, but they...
Evidently, he didn't like my number.
Oh, there you go.
He didn't like my number.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
It's a good number. More than covers anything that you might need.
Yep.
Okay, what's next?
Well, we've got to figure...
It's probably around there, I mean, if you're talking about off, offsite work doesn't just improve the infrastructure, you know, you're talking, you know, in case we need a consultant or anything like that.
Hundred and a half.
Yeah, something like that, you might want to tell them, but, yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, is, is progress through it.
Wait.
Yeah, this is for the offsite, so... Buck and a half.
Where'd you go, 200, split in the middle?
No, we're still on that, but, yeah. How much do you go? 150?
Should be 20. Hey, for a number right now, that's fine, babe, I'd like Mike to go through and actually get a number.
Yes. Again, they, Mike, they may have to get more... For occupancy...
Eventually, yep.
Yeah, for the, for the... So, we get a couple of... I imagine you'll take it out.
Oh, at the site? Okay, so I'm not, I'm with that.
And they're not conscientious.
Yeah, and so I, we have, we just have a force where there's no one involved.
He's not intentioned.
Yes. Nobody's... No, my intention on warehouse, babe.
But...
I mean, I wish I could be so... I put a 30-inch in, I don't, he's not my brother, stupid idiot, never asked me. A lot of pipe off of, uh...
30-inch? 30?
No, 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 no.
Bernie, what's Bernie got?
The last one, babe.
Number five?
Yes, sir.
Come on up, Bernie. Just, uh, we're just going to hold you up for a...
One moment, oh, yeah, sit down.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan.
Go fuck it out there, Ken.
Usually have some important things...
I know, can't, well, you better, Bernie. I guess you're right, Bob. My social security check's coming, though.
Gotta be a six-inch.
Eight-inch, sorry, sorry, eight-inch, eight-inch. They dug it up anyhow, it doesn't matter.
I got Mrs. Ryan.
Eight-inch.
Oh, we're supposed to build six houses now?
This is the third time.
We're back, we're back.
Where did Rosalie go at Patty?
I'll tell you offline, I prefer not to broadcast.
All right, so what's the change this time, Bernie?
There, there isn't a change, it's identical to the first two times. There, there's been, there's been an incredible feeling of deja vu that we get when we look at this application, and it is because, for a variety of reasons, it's just never gotten off the dime. Lots of things have changed, I think Patrick knows that...
Right.
...better than anybody. And because of all of those changes that have happened in the family, it's now the opportune time to move forward, whereas prior to this, there was still some indecision about it. We probably jumped the gun in 15 and 16, but we're here tonight to say that it's, it's going to be a, if, if we get favorable action, the, the ultimate subdivision of those two lots will be happening almost immediately. So, that's, it, it, there's, there's nothing more that, that I can say, you've seen this application before. It ends up being what we considered at the time, and I think the zoning board agreed twice, a relatively de minimis variance. Compared to the houses in the neighborhood and, and the surrounding area, the lots are as big, if not bigger, and they compare favorably all the way down the line. So, I'm here tonight because I thought I'd come and say hello and just ask your blessing as I go Thursday evening, but that's really all there is here, there's nothing more or less than what it, what it had been in the previous incarnations.
Recommend favorable.
Okay, yeah. I recommend a favorable, a move for favorable. Moved by John, seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstention.
Thank you. I figured you'd suffered enough back there.
Hey, Mike, my mistake, I would have brought you right after Pete, I'm sorry.
Sorry, he even wanted to...
All they had to do was clean up the water pipe, that was a holdup last time.
Couple extra.
You want these?
You could ask them, I, I'm recusing myself on this one.
Yeah, just, just put them in front of them.
Thank you, ladies.
Tell them those are doing...
All right, say hello to Leslie.
I will do that, thank you.
This is just to show you that the issues that held it up the last time, at the last meeting, have been resolved, and you can point out what they are.
My name is Brian Hassett.
No, he's from Allen. Allen, Allen these days.
Which one is here?
Yep.
So, my name is Brian Hassett, I'm a civil engineer for Allen Engineering and Associates here at Presenting Sierra Naturals. Last meeting, Mark Allen is here presenting, unfortunately, he's got a scheduling conflict, so I'm filling in for him. So, last meeting, I believe the only hang-up was the water line and the road moratorium. You guys had asked Mark to, to find out if that moratorium is still in effect. I have an email here, I'm not sure who to give it to.
Chairman.
But the moratorium ended on June 1st this year, so initially, we're proposing that they tie it to the water to the existing stub that's, that's already shown, but that would require us to go all the way around this way or all the way around the other way. Since the moratorium has, has ended anyway, now we're proposing the water come in through here, through a two-inch line and a six-inch line. We're also initially proposing only one water service coming in at the request of Fire Department and Water Department. We're putting in a two-inch line and a six-inch line. And that I'd like to turn to the board for questions or comments.
That was the only thing that was holding it up.
Right, it's, yeah, it's...
Recommend approval.
They put it in, they tore up the electric, the temporary electric line, they're all set, no problem. It's pleasure to the board.
Motion we approve, Brian.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one abstention. Thank you.
Why are you wanting to do the motion that was your...
All right, Paul, he left something down.
You've got an abstention, man.
No, he asked me to add anything more. Do you have anything more?
Also there, Larry?
No, Larry, Dave said something. You got something? You got?
What do you got?
John, you have one left? Oh, uh, there's, there's a ton of Amazon vans down on East Main Street. Are they going to be left there or why are they there?
Is what?
Right across from, uh...
Kevin's?
Yeah, right across Kevin's.
Well, he owns it.
Who does?
Kevin.
Kevin.
Own what?
Own the end of the van's law.
I know.
Yeah.
But CB.
All our, all our building department, if he's, must run a transportation from the line there, he needs approval.
He doesn't have approval on the CB.
He doesn't have approval now?
Well, but he, yeah, it's...
So, he's stocking those vans from Amazon?
I don't know. Oh, there are a bunch of white vans down there.
Is it some... East Main Street.
Wow.
Is that one enterprise? No, no, no. Are the vans enterprises, are they, I don't know who's that.
I don't know who they are.
I don't go down there because you can't get through there, so I don't, I don't, I don't see that.
Effectively, he's, he's got cars across the street and he's got vans where the old music thing was.
Registered vans?
Yeah.
So, they're not for the car dealership? I, I don't go over there.
I don't know.
That's another one of my pet peeves. Notify the building department.
Yeah, Larry, if you just, just give the building department a holler and see if they can at least find out. I mean, you know, it, 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 it looks like he may, he may be running part of the Hyundai dealership across the street for some of the stuff.
Yeah.
Which wasn't on the plan that they gave us.
And he hasn't got any approvals to do anything over there yet.
Right.
To do the paving, to put the vehicles there, any of that.
Right.
Excuse me.
He's never, isn't there a time he comes before us and let us know what's going on?
Only if...
Huh?
Last time he came in front of us... The last time that I remember that was discussed, I thought there was some sort of convenience store, a gas station or something.
Gas station.
That's right, gas station.
Like I said, that, that's the last time I recall.
Yeah, that was a while back.
They were trying it out.
There's a right, there's a right way through there that he doesn't, he doesn't have the right to do that, so that's why that got canceled, that's why that got canceled.
Okay.
You could put a, you could put a bridge through, yeah. Motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Larry, here. I'll have to fold mine up for you to make it easier.
Or whatever you used to do.
Thank you and good night.
Okay, you got a motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just keep the money.
Good night.
Good night, Jerry. Good night, Jerry.